Welcome to the Daily Inner Lake's Kalispell City Council Candidate Forum. And special thanks to Applied Materials for sponsoring this forum. I'm Matt Baldwin, Regional Editor for the Daily Inner Lake, and I will be moderator for tonight's forum. This evening, we will hear from candidates running for Kalispell City Council. Candidates participating tonight include Chad Graham and Gabe Dillon, who are running for Ward 2, Rod Koontz and Jessica Dahlman, who are running for Ward 3, and Angela Kennedy, who is running for Ward 4. Jed Fisher is also running for Ward 4, but he let us know he is sick and unable to attend tonight's discussion. Sandra Carlson is also running unopposed for Ward 1 seat, and she was unable to attend as well. The mayoral candidates, Mark Johnson and Sid Dowd, have been invited by the Daily Inner Lake to participate in an online forum set for October 28th. This evening's questions have been submitted by Daily Inner Lake readers and our editorial staff, and they have not been shared with the candidates in advance. All of the candidates have been briefed on the process of this evening's event and have agreed to follow the established guidelines to keep us on track. Candidates will receive a 15-second warning when their time is expiring, and they will be muted at the conclusion of time. This forum is being recorded and streamed live on Facebook. A recorded version will be made available at the Daily Inner Lake's website. This is not a debate. It's a questions and answers forum, meaning candidates will not be given time for rebuttal. We will rotate through the candidates as they introduce themselves and answer questions. With all that said, it's time to begin. Each of you will have two minutes to introduce yourselves to the audience and tell us why you're running for city council. Tonight, we'll begin with Jessica. Jessica, go ahead.
And I live here in Kalispell. My husband and stepson, who is 11 years old, and my son, who is 24, live in downtown Kalispell. I'm a working professional. I'm a registered nurse at the local hospital. I'm an active union member and worked hard for the last three years to help the nurses come to an agreement and get our first contract here in Kalispell. I'm a previous business owner. And I'm running because service to my fellow, you know, human beings has been an internal drive since I can remember. It's been my daily goal to do something kind for others. If it's just some small act of kindness or grand gesture is representing the great city of Kalispell. I've helped people in my previous massage business with their chronic pain and as a nurse, providing my skill to the communities I serve and as a union member, inspiring others to find their voice and stand up for what is right. I'm excited to deepen my compassion for this community by serving on city council.
Thank you, Jessica. Gabe, you're next.
Thank you. Hi, yeah, my name is Gabe Dillon. I'm running in Ward 2, which is the northeast part of Kalispell. I've lived here for six years, just celebrated our sixth year living here on October 12th. So it feels good to feel like a local. I am from Colorado. That's where I was born and raised. And my background, going to college, was in education. I was a high school teacher for 11 years, serving at-risk youth at a public charter high school in Boulder, Colorado. And we had our first child in 2014, and I did the stay-at-home dad thing for a year plus and very much enjoyed that experience. And then when we visited Kalispell for my wife's 20th high school reunion, we made the decision that we were done with the Denver area and wanted to move here. I'd been visiting the area for about 15 years before deciding to move here. So my current professional career is in outdoor recreation. I work for Voice Black Tail Trails, where the Trail Stewardship Partners for Heron Park to Black Tail Mountain. And, you know, the reason I'm running for city council is because I'd like to offer that perspective, to give a voice to some of the people that are underserved in our community. And I'd also like to provide that outdoor recreation and that transportation perspective as well for the walkability and bikeability of Kalispell. So thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you, Gabe. Chad, go ahead.
Thank you, Matt. First of all, I want to start off by saying that the last eight years on the city council has been an extreme honor for me to be able to serve Ward 2 at the council level. My name is Chad Graham. Family, my wife Tori, my daughter Abigail, and a little beagle named Annie that made her way into the family. I'm a fifth-generation Flathead resident. I've lived here for 42 years. I am a small business owner of 20 years. And my schooling background is for computer-aided design. And I have been the president of the city council for the last five years, and I've been on the planning board, been the chair of the planning board for the last eight years as the liaison from the city council to the planning board. You know, and, you know, the reason why I'm running is because I feel that with the plans and policies that we've put together the last eight years, there's still some work that still needs to be done with those. And I want to continue the work that we've been doing. I think that experience is needed for that. We have a downtown plan, the core area plan, transportation plan that we just adopted. And I want to take my experience and my skills that I've learned over the last eight years to represent Ward 2 at the city council level.
Thanks, Chad. Angela?
Yeah, Curse of Mutant. Hi, everybody. I'm Angela Kennedy. I'd like to take the opportunity, first off, to thank the Daily Inner Lake and Applied Materials for putting this forum together. It's great for us to be able to share our message and reach out to everybody. I am a Kalispell resident of about four years. I also came from Colorado. I tell people Colorado's beautiful, Montana's exquisite. I'm very happy to be here. I am a homeowner and I'm retiring here. I had opportunities to choose where I live, and I chose Kalispell. I have worked all over the United States, but I've always lived in Colorado. And with my travels throughout major cities and small cities and small towns, I've seen a lot of good things and a lot of things that weren't done well. One of the things that I think as, with my experience in working with major corporations, major federal entities, I've worked for Applied Materials. That was who I came here to work for in the valley. I've worked for the Army. I've worked for the Department of Defense. I've worked for the Bureau of Land Management. And working for different entities, I've discovered that, you know, I can bring things that might be a little bit of a different perspective. And for the city of Kalispell, what I can bring is the experience of being in different locations. I have a professional project management certification, which is a difficult certification to get, but it means that I've ran projects up to $64 million. And I'm fine with working with very large budgets and understanding how things work on a large scale. I have a master's in operations and an academic certificate in project management. So I tend to be a little bit of a project management geek. I've enjoyed being here in the valley. I have met some of the most talented, wonderful, kind-hearted people here. And it's my opportunity to give back to the people of Kalispell. I look forward to helping you in Ward 4.
Thanks, Angela. Rod, you're up.
Thanks. My name's Rod Koontz, and I have been in the valley for 36 years. I too am a transplant from eastern Montana. I fell in love with Kalispell in 1978 when I came to watch the bald eagle migration in Glacier National Park. For those of you who might remember that, before they destroyed the fisheries, the eagle migration ceased. So I fell in love with Kalispell on my first trip here. And when I finished with my military service, I came from Hawaii directly to the Flathead Valley and made Kalispell my home. I've been here ever since. I've raised four children here. My wife is a midwife. She's delivered about 1,000 new residents to the Flathead Valley. So four children is a small part for me to be playing in that. My background, I've worked in blue-collar work in agriculture, in the forest industry, in construction. White collar as a teacher, as a supervisor in a health and fitness organization. And on top of everything else, I've found time to write a book. I've been in sales and marketing for most of my last 20 years in adult life. And I spent five years serving the city, five and a half years on the city council. So I know what the city can and can't do. I know what the rules and laws are and why we have them and how to change them if necessary. And I know how to prioritize, compromise, work together to get things done. And I understand the historic and intended role of our government in our lives. And with my wide background, especially on city council, I'm not here to waste time. I'm here to get to work and serve the people as best I can. And Ward 3 is a high-impact area in our city, and I really appreciate that. Look forward to serving.
Thanks, Rod. So Jed asked me to read just his introduction that he had submitted to our Q and As that published in the Daily Inner Lake last week. So I'm going to go ahead and do that now for him. So Jed Fisher, he's running for Ward 4. He's retired for 31 years. He was department head for Flathead County and a former owner of Park Place Properties of Kalispell. He has a son, Roman, and a daughter, Megan. He grew up working on the family farm in Conrad, Montana. He worked for Pandora County and was department head for Glacier County for five years and department head for Flathead County for 31 years. He managed numerous departments, including the weed department, parks and recreation, and building and maintenance. He has owned and managed rental properties in both Conrad and Kalispell. And he retired from his work at Flathead County in March. So with that, let's get into some questions. Our first question, you're going to have two minutes to answer. Again, you'll get a 15-second warning when it gets close to the end there. So this is a reader submitted question from Josh Healy, and it addresses a topic that's come to the forefront over the last few years, the need for more workforce housing. Josh points out that long-term rentals are more expensive than ever and difficult to find, and homeownership seems to be slipping out of reach for many. It's important to note that the city has permitted about 330 new multifamily units this year alone, and that's up from 130 at this time last year. What is your plan to ensure that Kalispell has an adequate level of workforce housing going forward? And we're going to start with Gabe.
Thanks. Yeah, that's a tough question to answer. You know, building costs are high and property values are high and the entry into the housing market can be a very difficult one. I remember my first home in Denver was $159,000. And that's not going to get you anything around here these days. You know, I know it's not a popular notion with this current council and folks around here in general. But perhaps we should put a tool in the box. You know, I'm not talking about necessarily a deed-restricted plan that would make a block, a certain percentage of homes in a block have to be at an affordable price. But perhaps a housing trust could be something that city council could establish and build it into the budget. Could be something that you could build up over time and be able to, you know, make that accessible to those that are getting into it. Currently, most of what's happening on the really affordable stuff's going out into the county. And, you know, if we want to see more of that development in the city, perhaps we should put one of those tools in the box. I don't, I don't think that making the development costs cheaper for the developers necessarily makes that affordable housing. It does help drive up the inventory. But, you know, we're all paying higher sewer and water rates as a result of impact fees being lowered. So, excuse me, that's just one possible solution that I'd like to offer up. Thanks.
Thank you. Chad, you're up.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, 330 this year alone. That's due to the success of this council, this current council, the policies and plans we've put into place. And it's the direct result of government getting out of the way, removing barriers to entry that once before attribute to the bottom line that transfers over to the end user. If you make construction more expensive, it's going to translate to the end user. That's the rate, that's renters, and that's home buyers. When you move that line and you increase the cost to build, you are increasing the cost to sell for commissions. You're increasing several line items in that budget. So it's not just a one-item increase. And we're talking, you know, about impact fees. You want to raise impact fees. It's not just that. It's going to raise four other areas of the cost to build. So, you know, what we're not going to do is we're not going to raise impact fees. We're not going to go and bring in inclusionary zoning. That doesn't work. It hasn't worked in Whitefish. They ran development out of Whitefish because of inclusionary zoning. They're now in Kalispell, doing business in Kalispell. We are doing the right thing in Kalispell to get affordable housing and workforce housing going. Costs can still come down with the decrease in materials. But, you know, if we want to talk about, you know, what happened with the impact fee and water rates, the water rate went up $21 a year on average, and our water rates were, they're the lowest in the state, and it hadn't been increased in 10 years. So they were due for an increase anyhow, and that's what this last council's gone through and done. As we've gone through and we've put our utility rates on solid footings, and that was a part of that. But the one thing you can't do is increase the cost to build this inventory, this affordable house. It's called affordable housing. I don't understand how you can get affordable housing by increasing the cost to do it.
Thanks, Chad. Angela?
It's definitely an interesting scenario that we're in. We have a record number of people that want to move to the valley, and a lot of our existing residents can't afford homes. So what I see is that we have two types of housings, buckets that we're looking at. We're looking at large development for people who can afford and people who can't. For the people who can't and the developers who are working on affordable housing, then I can understand, you know, reducing impact fees and giving them space to develop within Kalispell. But outside of that, you know, other developers that are coming in, you know, the impact fees need to remain the same. The sewer and water installation fees need to remain the same. It doesn't make sense for someone who's having such a high gross profit margin on the houses that are building, being built for people who don't need affordable housing to not pay for the privilege of developing here in the valley. It just doesn't make sense. So I think, you know, hearing from my constituents, they're concerned about that. They're concerned that also, you know, with the growth in Kalispell, their property values are going up and correspondingly, their taxes are going up. So that is an impact on their affordability of their existing homes. So that's a concern, too. So there's, well, I want to say a plethora of things that need to be considered to make housing affordable for everyone. It's not just, you know, bringing in new development. It's controlling the taxes on the houses that we have, building homes for people that are moving here who can afford it, and really working on developing houses for people who can't afford even to get into the housing market. Thank you. Sorry, I saw the hand.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. I think Rod might have dropped off the call. So we'll, maybe we'll get back to him later. All right, Jessica?
Um, I think the pandemic created a unique situation that really sped up the growth in this area really exponentially. And I think city council has done a really good job of, you know, bringing in more housing through the mixed developments. And I think the accessory dwelling unit zoning change is really going to add some more housing into this area that may be more affordable. I think all of these things are a step in the right direction. It's not going to, like, end this issue for sure. I think more information might be good. Maybe getting a needs assessment and really kind of seeing what is out there that we really need. And when we get that information, that might be something that we can bring back to developers and say, hey, you know, we need more of this type of housing or less of this. And, you know, I think our downtown would be a great place to, you know, maybe upgrade some of these, you know, historic buildings that could possibly be used for apartments. And, you know, continuing to enrich, you know, our city and community partnerships, like the community land trusts, possibly with, you know, some of the property management companies. And seeing if we can come up with solutions to help keep the prices down for the people that are living here and working here.
Thanks, Jessica. Rod, you're back. Great. Why don't you hop in there? Did you hear the question?
No, but I understand we're talking about affordable housing. So that's enough to go on, I think.
What's your plan to ensure that what Kalispell has an adequate level of workforce housing?
Okay, well, the plan is to carry on with what the city's doing, quite honestly. The city, even while I was on the council, I've watched several people get on the council, get elected to the council, and they ran on the platform of affordable housing. They all wanted to do something about affordable housing. And then they find out that it really is not in the purview of the city to manipulate the housing market. We do not have a housing authority in the city of Kalispell. Several decades ago, that was given over to Community Action Partnership. And so, you know, that part of that is out of the equation. What we can do is, like Councilman Graham pointed out, is, you know, really minimize the red tape and keep things cleaned up so that people have an incentive to come and build in the city. And increasing inventory of all housing types is what we need to do. We need to encourage that, that type of growth in the city, where we've got affordable units, we've got housing units, we've got apartment buildings. And again, building vertically is always more cost-effective as well. So the way the zoning's been working and everything else, the city is poised, and I will say this, the city was poised to be ahead of this current housing crisis before COVID hit. We were really ahead of the game when it came to what was in the pipeline for housing. When COVID hit, it really set us back. So.
All right, thanks, Rod. Okay, we're going to go on to our next question. Again, you're going to have two minutes for this one, and you'll get a 15-second warning. This question also has to do with the city's growth. The last census data shows that Kalispell grew by 23% over the last decade and now has a population of 24,558. That growth rate is slightly higher than what was anticipated in Kalispell's growth policy. And that census data may not be correct, since it was taken during COVID. There's probably more people here than that shows. Kalispell has proven to be a desirable place to live, and there are no signs that this growth is going to slow down anytime soon. If elected, how would you look to direct and manage the growth that is occurring, including mitigating the issues that come with growth? And we're going to start with Chad.
Well, yeah, thanks for the question. It's a very important question. It's a hard question. And what I would say is, we, what we're doing is, more subdivisions are coming online into the system. And it goes, they're multi-use subdivisions, so it allows for different types of construction in there. And what that would go and do is it would allow for people to not really necessarily need to take every trip into town. There might have some of the amenities in that subdivision that they can use. So that helps out with the impact to the city. The other thing is, really, the Move 2040 transportation plan that we just did, we'll go and open up capacity in certain areas. Obviously, funding is a part of it, but we've identified through that, you know, projects, the downtown for three-lane, which can only really happen unless there's a way for that traffic to be rerouted. But for the, the growth that's happened, you know, we want to talk about the growth, the 23%. A part of that is, you know, we want to talk about impact fees or something that that growth affects the impact fees. And I'm hearing, you know, some of the stuff is to raise impact fees, but it's based off of growth. It's based off of a growth rate. So it may go to where you do a study, because you have to do a study on impact fees. It may go to where it shows further reduction because of that growth. So, I mean, the question is, you know, what do we do about the 23%, if not more? What do we do about that? I'm just kind of taking the approach of how to mitigate the impact to the city of Kalispell.
Thanks, Chad. Angela, you're up.
Okay. Growth is to be expected. I looked at a little bit of historical data. It's been from 2000 to now, at least the document that I looked at said 29% growth during that time period. And that's huge. And we're facing unprecedented growth because we've been discovered and people want to live here, and myself included. It's a beautiful place to be. I did have a meeting with Doug Russell, and we talked a little bit about the city's plan and how they have forecasted out the infrastructure build and other things to mitigate the risk to the city to being caught behind on growth. So that made me feel more comfortable with the way that the city's looking at it. From my perspective, Kalispell's doing a great job looking at that and evaluating, you know, the things that need to be done. So there's no complaints there. My concern is, you know, developers come in and they leave. And I want to make sure that, you know, when developers come in, that they realize this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to come here and develop houses and not just, you know, plop them down and leave, to come in and look at where they're putting the homes and, you know, the city council to maybe say, hey, this is a beautiful view plane. Let's retain that. Or this is something that, you know, maybe we shouldn't develop on, to consider that. Because, like Gabe and I both said, we came from Colorado, and every flat piece of land was open for development. And it was sad to see a lot of the mountain view planes disappear and that type of stuff. So I'm pretty sure Kalispell doesn't want to see that happen. And I would like to, you know, step back and consider how Kalispell needs to plan its growth.
I've lost audio again. Am I up?
Yes, you are.
Angela, Rod, you're up now. Rod, can you hear us? Why don't we go to Jessica while we figure out Rod's? You ready, Jess?
I am. Thank you. You know, I think.
I don't have any audio on my end, but I will jump in on this. I had an opportunity to work on the growth policy plan at 2035. And Kalispell. And Kalispell, although we're hearing the the high numbers of of growth, 29%, it's not far out of line from the projected growth rate, which was 2% annually. So we have to keep that in mind. This this is Plan Four Growth. We had a surge after COVID, but it is planned growth, and we're not that far out of the realm. To do to look at Planet 2035, when we sat down and we're looking at growth policy, we were looking out 30, 50, and even 100 years. What's going to happen here? We're not done growing. We will never be done growing. This this is going to be an issue for future councils. We just need to set everybody up for success. And the growth will continue to happen. We just need to be smart about it. We need to be managing it as as best we can. And again, collaboratively with the county wherever possible, because it is going to affect the entire valley population as we move forward. So I don't know how much time I had there, but I'll yield the floor on that.
Thanks, Rod. All right, Jessica, you're up again.
Thanks. You know, I think we should preserve and lean on what makes this town so an area so great. Having a council with a variety of backgrounds will help guide us in preserving that. We have this historic, beautiful historic town that has a great plan already. And we have this rich surrounding farmland and mountain areas that make this area so beautiful. I think to preserve that, we need to think about those things when making decisions. We should support more compact housing, some infill for our growth, so our city services can provide things like water and sewer connections. So which in turn can help preserve open spaces and protect some groundwater quality. And I also agree that fostering a good relationship with the county can help manage growth appropriately outside city limits.
Thank you. Gabe.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess that's the good thing about going last is you can just agree with everyone else. I, you know, I think increasing the density in in housing in the city of Kalispell is a good thing. I love the the number of local farms that that we have that produce produce for us. And if we have a sprawling neighborhood all the way between the three cities of Columbia Falls, Whitefish, and Kalispell, it's gonna it's gonna look like the Denver Front Range, and I don't think any of us want that, want to keep our spaces open. So, you know, I support that higher density housing. I like when I'm walking the streets, you know, seeing in one block that there's in in certain areas, there's an apartment building. There's a bunch of duplexes, a bunch of single family homes. And I'm I'm hopeful that we will continue with that mix that mixed development. So that credit goes out to the current council for laying down that plan. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Gabe. All right, we're going to go on to question number three. This is another reader submitted question, and it's regarding emergency services and the city budget. The city's 2021-22 fiscal year budget includes funding for two additional firefighters and two police officers. Christina Grandrud wants to know if you would look to increase the number of police officers and firefighters serving the city? And what are some of your other budget priorities? We're going to start with Chad, and again, you have 90 seconds to answer this question. Chad, you're muted.
I just started the last one, so did you want to keep it rolling to the next person? I mean, I'll go, but now you're muted.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, we just added two policemen and two firefighters. That is attributed to growth. As we had commercial development come in, we were able to realize more money coming into the budget. And so that kept taxes down on the residents and gave us more funds to be able to hire. And as the city grows because of population, you really want to continue to grow your force. You want to grow your your police department and your emergency services. So, yeah, that's, you know, and there's obviously there's there's other areas for, you know, I always want to make sure that we are going and fully funding the police department. There are areas probably for streets that that could probably go through and be funded a little bit more. But it always is going to depend on are we able to keep taxes lower? I'm going to go and say I want to make sure that critical functions of the city of Kalispell are being funded. Emergency services, fire, streets, water, sewer. All of that, I want to make sure that's being funded first, but anything after that, you know, is is up for discussion.
Thank you. Angela.
My own mute? Nope. Okay. I think the city of Kalispell does a great job right now with the budget that they have and providing the services to the citizens. We get a huge amount of snow. I've been super impressed with, you know, the rate that the streets get cleared, all of those things, you know. Some of the things that would be nice to haves that would have to be built into the budget would be sidewalks and enhancing the sewer and water, but all of that's, you know, considered in the master plan that Rod and, you know, I brought up with the city management. So as far as adding to the budget, very few of my constituents have come up and said, hey, we need more from the city. What they're saying is, you know, they're concerned about paying more on their taxes. So if something additional needs to happen, then we need to find ways to generate revenue for that. As far as, you know, the basic safety, police, life, fire, all of that. I think it's we've got the right people in place. I have heard that, you know, from one of my constituents that we need additional fire fighters, but so that we can go out and help fight some of the forest fires or serve surrounding cities and surrounding areas, but because other areas do that to us. So there's considerations that we need to make there. And, you know, all of that's up for discussion. So at this point, but the bottom line is I think the city does a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Rod?
The the audio went out on my end again. I don't know what's happening with my feed. Could you please repeat the question?
I sure can. It's a reader submitted question. Would you look to increase the number of police officers and firefighters serving the city? And what are your other budget priorities?
Excellent. So the police department comes to us when we go through budgeting. We meet with all of the department heads. The police chief comes to us, the the fire chief comes to the city council, and they have a proposed budget based on their needs and the needs of the city, including what the growth, the current growth things are. So we really trust the professionals who lead those departments to direct city staff and the elected officials as to what their needs are. And then it's a matter of it of the counselors and the mayor sitting down, looking at that budget and saying, okay, does this look realistic? Do we need to increase this somehow? Do we need to decrease it in some areas? And time and again, we've given those departments, especially when it comes to safety, police, fire. We've given them everything they've asked for, and they're great about getting grants as well. So it's not just coming from the taxpayers. Those funds are coming from other sources, and ultimately that is our our money still. It's still taxpayer money. It's just going to the federal government or the state government, and then we get it back. So we trust the city officials who run those departments to direct us. And I would continue listening to them. They have not steered us wrong.
Thank you. Jessica. Jessica, you're on mute.
Can you see me? All right.
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
There we go. All right. I am in full agreement with Rod, and I think that we should let those city services guide us when they tell us what they need. I support full funding for all of our first responders. I think as the city grows, that it would make sense to be adding more police and more firefighters to the budget. And, you know, when that time comes around, we should listen to the people that are running those departments. And for additional budgetary concerns, I think what I'm hearing most from our constituents is safety for our children on the streets, sidewalks to schools. And I would like to, you know, be able to help people make them feel safe when they're sending their children off to school. So sidewalks is something that's seems to be really important, not only to me, but to everyone in my neighborhood.
Thanks, Jessica. Gabe?
Thanks. Yeah, the one of the comments that I've that I've heard is, you know, we've only got two police officers to work. You know, to, you know, this the city that's getting bigger and adding two more makes it that much better. So I fully support that as well. You know, obviously, first responders are important to our town. I guess the, you know, I mentioned this yesterday at a different forum. I feel like a cooperation between the city and the county. I think we are lacking in year round maintenance of of our trail system that that provides a way for folks that don't drive automobiles that have, you know, they don't own a car or they're too young that that normally would rely on a trail system or a connectivity to get their groceries or, you know, get get to school and back. You know, we have systems that that just don't, they don't get maintained year round. And I know that's a budget item. I know that that costs money to maintain, especially in in years that that it snows a lot in the winter, but it's something I would like to see changed or improved, rather. So that's all I really have to to add on that one. Thanks.
Thanks, Gabe. All right, we're going to go to our fourth question. You're going to have 90 seconds to answer this one as well. Construction of the Kalispell Parkline Trail is progressing quickly, but there are many decisions left to be made about the future development along this new corridor. How would you steer commercial and residential projects for the city's downtown core area? And we're going to start with Angela.
So the park line is an excellent opportunity to maybe do things where we do mixed use retail and residential, along with maybe even some recreational development. It would be nice to have, you know, retail high density, or I'm sorry, residential high density with apartments that are kind of on top of each other and a little bodega so that people don't have to get into their cars and drive. There's it's a great opportunity to do it right and to give people the solution to affordable housing and to also maybe even some high end housing. It can be very much a mixed use project. So I see that as being a great opportunity for the city of Kalispell and the people specifically, you know, of work for probably won't affect them that much, except for adding to the connectivity, you know, with the trails from being able to get from one point to another. So thumbs up to Kalispell on that. It's a great development. And that's how I would see, you know, utilizing it a little bit better.
Thanks, Angela.
Thank you.
Thank you. The the Parkline Trail, that core area, when when that whole thing was part of the the vision for the future of the city of Kalispell, the council spent a great deal of time looking at what the possibilities were for that. And that's why all the zoning for that was changed. It's changed to B3 to allow for all the things that everyone's talking about today. There there are some great ideas, but it's the city literally gave the it's like a musical instrument. They gave they gave the city, the residents, the community, a new piano. In fact, they give them a whole band. And now the type of music that's going to be played there is up to the community. You know, you can do whatever you want with those instruments. You can you can do classical, you can do jazz, you can do country, you can do rock and roll. You can do whatever you want with it, but it's not the city's job now to do that. The city's job was to pave the way, create that. And we have we have done that. We have done it in a magnificent fashion. And I will tell you that the grain elevators, I envisioned that being a restaurant, a restaurant on top and apartment dwelling units around that before we ever saw anything conceptualized like that. I shared that idea with some realtors, actually, and and they've come back to me and said, wow, you had a vision for that. It's like, not my vision, that was somebody else's. So, you know, this is going to happen, but it's going to be the community members, it's going to be the developers, it's going to be the the entrepreneurs that have the idea and the vision, and it's it's unstoppable. It's going to be great. Thanks.
Thanks, Rod. Jessica.
I I think the city council has adopted some design standards, which is going to help it kind of form the look that Kalispell already has, which I think is is important. And I think that will help support like a consistent feel to make everything kind of feel the same. I think supporting family businesses and local ventures should be a priority. And, you know, I think the sky is the limit with that. Whatever anyone wants to come up with and can put there is 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 good for the city. You know, I I agree that, you know, mixed use, housing, restaurants, you know, increased density in that area is going to be what will make the Parkline Trail really great. And I think we should just support our community members and and figuring out what they want to put there.
Thank you. Gabe?
Sure. Yeah, I just mirror everything everybody's saying. I'd hate to see, you know, just commercial and just services go into the Parkline Trail and not have any housing component to it, you know. We see some of this in in other towns where you have a commercial business downstairs, and then you have some apartments or something that go in upstairs. I'd like to see some of that happen. And, you know, I don't know how how much the council can actually steer those decisions. But, you know, if everyone's playing by the rules and getting their permits done and that sort of thing. There is one comment that I heard from someone that I found kind of interesting. I was put out there, you know, there's a there's a lot on the west end of it, and it's it's beyond where the the Parkline Trail is, west of Meridian, that something happened with it in the past where it was being used for fill dirt or something like that, and then it was being replaced. And the way that it was replaced was was improper. And so that that chunk of of land that got redone, that the the trail portion of it got redone. It's you can't build on it, from what I understand. So I think it's a great opportunity to put in a park or something right there, some green space. So that'd be cool to see. Thanks.
All right, Chen, you're up.
Yeah, this is such an exciting thing to always talk about. It's one of the things that was so glad to be able to be a part of. Rod has literally said everything I want to say about it, but I'm going to try to say it in a different way. You know, the thing about it is, as a city, we have gone and done what we're going to do with it. We've rezoned the whole area that sets the table for and allows for so many uses for private development to come in and say, this is our vision. And we've already seen the vision from the Silos Project, and I hope that sets a standard to go down the whole trail. You know, the I can certainly imagine housing being a part of it. We actually just approved another apartment building to the west end that is going to be connected to it. So people, well, inadvertently connected to it so people could walk down the trail. And one of the best things that I've done on the council was after we had our final vote, before it went into the design phase, when we did our final vote and pushed it off to the community, I thought it was so nice to be able to take this project and hand it hand it off to the community so that it is their project to do what they want with. It's a clean palette.
Great. Thanks, Chad. All right, we're going to go to our last question, and you're going to have 90 seconds for this one as well. It's a question about transportation. The city council recently approved its Move 2040 Plan that lays out a vision for the future of transportation needs in the city. And that includes proposed lane expansions on some busy corridors and the possibility of roundabouts is and the possibility of roundabouts as traffic calming devices in some areas. Do you agree with the Move 2040 recommendations? And what are some of your ideas to improve traffic and parking in the city? And we're going to start with Rod.
First?
Rod, you're up.
Okay. Do you have me? I have no audio. I'll log out, log in again. You can go on.
Jessica, would you like to go?
Um, yeah, I want to congratulate everyone on all their hard work on the transportation plan. And I think moving forward with that is going to be helpful for the city. Moving forward, I would like to continue to look for more options for people to move around Kalispell that does not necessarily depend on car traffic. I think whatever we can do to make walking, biking, and public transit more accessible, I think it would benefit this community as a whole. And I really agree with Gabe's statement earlier about, you know, making sure that those areas that are walkable, bikeable, you know, are maintained year-round. I think that that would be very helpful for keeping more cars off the road in the wintertime when it's very slippery out there. So, yeah, I think, like I said before, it seems to be a big concern for people in this community, supporting more sidewalks to and from school. And anything that may connect, you know, to the Parkline Trail, which connects, you know, one side of the town to the other. Anything that would be able to support more connectivity, I think, would be a great way for people to enjoy this great city. Yeah, I think that's, that would be it.
Thanks, Jessica. Gabe, you're up.
Yeah, I'm really happy with the compromises that had to happen to make the plan come to fruition. You know, I know there's a lot of the outdoor recreation and ADA and accessibility groups that don't think that the plan went far enough and that should have, should have had more components in it to make the city more walkable or whatever. But, I mean, it's a compromise between, between the Montana Department of Transportation and the county. And it's like, you can't get anything done if you just, if you keep pushing for one thing, you know, even though it's not, it's not something that you think goes far enough. So, yeah, I support, I support what, what has been passed. As far as the roundabout piece, I mean, it's, it's like with the Third and Fourth Avenue thing, you know, making it from one way to two-way a few years ago. If you wanted the street to be slower traffic so your kids could be out front, then you're all aboard for two-way streets. And if you wanted that street to be your way to get north to south or south to north in the town, and that got taken away from you, then you're also right. I think the proponents of roundabouts, I think it's a similar thing. I don't know if I support these roundabout proposals, but, you know, that's what, that's what's in the works. So, thanks.
Thanks, Gabe. Chad?
So, I'm going to go and say I agree with Gabe. I like what he said. You know, the thing is about the roundabouts, I'm not a fan of them. I have to see more information on them, but I did not like what I saw about the roundabouts and the intersection. The traffic calming, there certainly can be things other than that to be dealt with, traffic calming. But, you know, the Move 2040 debate that we had did, was a compromise between both sides, you know, the Department of Transportation and those that wanted it to go further towards pedestrian. But the thing about it is, is that you have to have that open capacity for vehicular traffic. And, you know, I agree with trails. I'm a proponent for trails, but what I would say is that opening trails up for maintenance will raise taxes. The money has to come from somewhere for parks and rec. It will raise taxes on the Kalispell residents. That's why it hasn't been done. But, you know, there's more I can say about it. I got the hand, but I think this was a good question.
Thanks. Angela? Angela, you're muted?
I want to echo what everybody else said. Instead of repeating it, just so, you know, I think the plan was well thought out. There's concern for accessibility during ice and snow times. And roundabouts, yeah, you love them or you hate them. On the bypass, I would love to have seen overpasses instead of, you know, roundabouts there because it kind of defeats the point of having a bypass for a big truck. But that's just my opinion. The one thing that I do see as being important for the transportation is, you know, what about, what about linking the three cities, Sea Falls, Whitefish, even some of the other areas? And that would take working with the county. It'd be nice to have a decent bike trail, kind of like the one that goes into Summers, up to Whitefish and, you know, over to Columbia Falls and maybe straight up into the park. So there's opportunities to make the, you know, trip up to the park bikeable versus carable. That's a good way to put it. So reaching out and working with other entities for even a bigger, you know, walkability, hikeability, bikeability opportunity is what I would like to see. Thank you.
Rod, you want to jump in on this one? See there again? Rod, can you hear us?
I can hear you. You're in and out.
Do you?
I'll weigh in. I'll weigh in on, on traffic and transportation. We have some great plans, and the, the trail plans, the transportation plan, the 2008 Parks Plan that a lot of people haven't looked at, it might need to be pulled out and dusted off again. It literally deals with the connectivity, not only of Kalispell, but Kalispell with our other neighboring communities. So it's all there. It's just a matter of implementing it as growth happens and as money comes in, as grants are available, et cetera. And I will echo too, the, we've heard talk about the sidewalks. And now that we're approaching fall and winter, just a reminder to people out there, it is your responsibility to clear your sidewalks off, and especially if you've got schoolkids walking by, do your sidewalks. If you've got elderly neighbors, help them. Do their sidewalks. I mean, step up and help clear this stuff off. And just to throw this in the mix, we have people in the community, I've talked to several, that think we should be like Helena and only plow out our arterial roads and leave the, all the feeder streets, that would be all the residential streets unplowed. So that's one way to save money. You can literally stop plowing the streets, and I'm not a fan of that. And I see the hand, so I'm out.
Thanks, Rod. All right, we're going to go to closing remarks now. Candidates, thank you for being with us this evening. You're each going to have two minutes to conclude your thoughts and share your vision for the future of Kalispell. And we're going to start with Jessica. Go ahead, Jessica.
Well, I just want to thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts. And I hope you see that my experience and perspective would be a valuable asset to this community. It has been really rewarding to be able to be a part of this campaign, learn more about my community, and get to know my neighbors better. You know, I have really enjoyed taking care of this community as a nurse. And I would, I'm looking forward to being able to share my compassion as a council member. I've learned so much about Kalispell, and I can't wait to be even more informed. I plan to work hard as a community member and council member, and I'm already a proud citizen of Kalispell, and I'll be even more so, given the chance to represent city council in Ward 3. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Gabe?
Thanks. You know, one of the reasons that I ran was because, you know, seats go uncontested for these kind of local elections pretty often. You know, we're not seeing any contested seats in Columbia Falls. And I will admit, I was asked to run for city council, and it's been an incredible experience getting in on, you know, learning what city council does, what are the issues for Kalispell? How does, how do things work behind the scenes? So, you know, a little competition's a good thing. And again, you know, I'd like to offer a different perspective as a potential council member. I've got a background in serving those that don't necessarily have a voice or serving those that are traditionally underserved. And I'm hoping that that perspective will be one that is welcome on the city council. So thanks for hosting this evening, and I really appreciate the dialogue between all the candidates. And quite honestly, it's, you know, as between Chad Graham and myself, I appreciate you running a clean campaign and keeping things on the positive. And it's really important to keep things cool like that. So I appreciate it.
Thanks, Gabe. Chad, you are up next.
Hey, yeah. Well, thank you, Gabe, for the sentiment, and I back at you on that. It has been a fun campaign so far. I did put myself in the R as well, though. So I wanted just to continue to draw on my experience of the past eight years to continue to move Kalispell forward. I've been active in a lot of these plans, a lot of these policies and guidelines. I want to continue to implement them. I understand that, you know, when you're running for council and you've not been on the council before, there's a lot of things that you want to get in there and you want to do and you think you can do. And then you get in there and you're like, oh, hard stop. Nope, you can't do that. It's against the law. I understand these things that you're able to do and what you're not able to do as a councilman on the city council because of state law or otherwise. So what I would like to continue to do is, is keep pushing for my first passion, which was to go and promote privacy, safety, and help promote people's property values in their property. And I am always about cutting taxes. I want to cut taxes the best that we can. Because if you're not cutting taxes and you're at the high end, you don't, you don't have anything in the cupboard. You don't, you can only raise taxes so much. You've got to keep those mills in the cupboard for the bad times. And if you're always maxed out, you've got nowhere to go. So I always want to make sure we're behind our mills. And for our residents, cutting taxes is the best thing that I can do. And I want to make sure that staff in the city is always taking the taxes they collect and stretching them as far as it possibly can. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Angela?
Okay. I would like to, first off, thank everybody again, especially the D-Lister. Like, this was really well-run. And just a great forum for us to get out and speak to what we're hearing from our constituents and why we're running for office. One of the reasons I'm in this position for city council for Ward 4 is I want to give back. I agree with what Gabe said. A lot of times, these positions run uncontested. And it makes sense for someone to come in that has the aptitude and desire to work for the people in their ward. So I, for the, the folks that I've spoken to in Ward 4, I will work for you. I agree with what Chad said, you know, it's working with the city. Our job is to maximize the budget that we have and the taxes, keeping them as low as we possibly can and not overextending ourselves as an entity. So there's some important things that we have to do as city council people. I will go, I will fight for the people in my ward, and I will make sure that their concerns are heard at the city council level. I'm here for you, not for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. Rod? Rod, can you hear us?
Eric called me in spring and asked if I would please consider running again and getting back on council. He thought with all the growth we've had and the COVID issues that the city was faced with, he wanted experienced council people working with him to drive through and get to the other side of this. And I told him, no. And he called me back and asked me to lunch and said, let's talk about the issues. I want you to understand this. And then I told him I would think about it. And I did think about it. And I asked my family, my family, my adult children who have moved back here to the valley. And they said, why wouldn't you, Dad? We need you there. And it's, it's necessary for me to do this. It's the right time for me to jump back in. It's my last chapter to get in here. I'm not career step, and I'm not looking to do anything. It's some really tricky terrain. And Chad, Chad mentioned it. It takes a couple of years to get your feet underneath you in a city council. Every councilman will tell you that. I think a councilperson who served at least one term should get an honorary master's degree in municipal government from our local schools here. It's a learning curve, but this is an amount of service that just can't be, it can't be stressed enough how important it is to our community. I want to give not just back, I want to give ahead. I want to give to my children. I want to give to my grandchildren. I want to give to my great-grandchildren and anyone else who's moving here from anywhere else, the best place they can have in the future. And that's why I'm running. Thanks.
Thanks, Rod. And thank you again to all our candidates and everyone watching online. And special thanks to Applied Materials for their presenting sponsorship of this forum tonight. Providing the electorate with the most relevant information possible is a job that we here at the Daily Interlake take very seriously. Please make sure to vote. If you missed any of tonight's event, it will be available later at www.dailyinterlake.com. Thanks again to all our candidates. It was a good discussion, and have a good night.